Council, I know it makes a lot of noise, but you have the council right in front of you. And Chris, I'm going to get down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. It's good to be back here. We embarked on a little project in the course of the summer to kind of comb through the official records, whether it was the orders structures, the dental records, anything relating to zoning decisions that the council has made since the adoption of zoning originally. And the intent was to really put together a map that shows what we have a record of, of the zoning classification that we have created. And each, at the front of the map, which you guys are doing a great job of holding there, just a couple tricks I'll tell you about later. But that map represents the status of zoning entitlements for every property within the city limits. And we had a couple of questions that came up last time, I think we met on September 27th. A couple of questions about, well, wait a minute, you know, this area over here, I know that there's a business, but it shows to be in a residential zone, that kind of thing. And the answer to that is that it is possible for uses to be on the ground and occupying a certain tract of land that are not consistent with the zoning. That simply means that the zoning by our records was never made from its original zoning classification to a commercial use classification in that particular instance. But anyway, this represents the basis, the framework. You have it now as a large format map that takes half an hour to fold up. Or we also have a link that we're going to make available for the website where people can look at it online, download, copy. You can zoom in, zoom out, and I think that'll make it a lot easier going forward. But I'm here in case there are any questions about the process, about the map. So I'm happy to address those.
Chris, I know it's easier for actually me to see the one that's right in front of us that's on the board. Can you kind of go through that and kind of tell us a little bit about what, what it is, how it changed, and how it affects us?
Okay. I'm not necessarily saying what changed because none of the actions that we've taken so far have changed the zoning. This is simply what has been done historically. You can see the red areas, I want to try and turn this towards the camera maybe a little bit. The red areas represent the commercial zoning districts, the yellow representing a single family, and the orange area representing a denser residential trimber in the district. Off the top of my head, the R2 multi-family. Those are the major zoning districts that we have. You'll also notice a lighter tan color in some areas, and those are areas which we're calling, they are by default, R1. That means that they came at some point into the city limits. They were annexed into the city limits, but there was no zoning action taken to change them to a permanent zoning district. So they still retain the initial default R1 zoning. That's all that that means. We just wanted to make that distinction because it's, it can be interpreted from the record. But that shows you, this map shows you, and I'm going to turn around and show it to the public if they get a chance to.
Do you have a powerpoint? What I want to be able to say is that, if I may, Councilman, Madam Mayor, is that unlike when Chris was standing before you before, unlike the annexation map that you can approve or disapprove and take out section, the purpose of this map is that historically, the city of Florenceville has never officially adopted a zoning map, which is what we need to do. And so some of those things that are there, this official record, that he's gone back to research to say, this is what it is. It's what we're asking for you tonight is to adopt officially a zoning map. Now, this is not a map that will stay like this as we add on new things, as we annex on, as we have zoning changes for planning and zoning. This makes a map that actually can be seen online, that somebody can come see. So it's not only that they have to call staff to say, what is this zoning? What zoning is that? It would be there, and it's there officially to say, here it is. Now, we did a comprehensive map, and so we have highest and best use, which Chris is also our godfather of that. And so that's what the purpose of this map is, just to say, this is not zoning as we stand today. Our default zoning always comes in as residential. I know that was a question that FDPC had for me, was why is some of our parcels residential? And we don't have residential. Because that's just like our default zoning. It just comes in as residential, and then you zone it as business, commercial, whatever it is, because each one's different. The reason why it's really important for us to do that is because we have pyramid zoning, which means that commercial is the highest use, and you can basically put anything commercial, but then you can restrict it going down to the pyramid. And so that's what we made a default zoning that's kind of like safe, a residential R1, and then we can change the zoning. So as you see the map today, this is the map that literally, as we approved things, as things come into town, it's just to say, you've never actually had a zoning map officially approved, which is one of our requirements. If you can ask your city attorney, which is one of our requirements. We have to have a zoning map that's approved. We also have to have it available to the public, which is always nice to have on our website. Sylvia?
Yes, we've.
Yes. And we've had this before, our planning and zoning commission. So they've seen the map. They can approve, they have recommended for the approval. And so we wanted to bring it for you to look at again. And we would, Sylvia asked earlier, can I have a smaller version? The smaller it gets, the harder it is to read. So I apologize for the size of the maps. But we just wanted to have one, because it's really kind of hard to read when you're talking about, you have it by 14. So there's no change there. It's just identifying that this is what we are.
So just to clarify, we approved the zoning map as it is. If the council, any of the councils so choose to change anything that comes into the council for official property owners can request for the zoning to change. And actually, on an annual basis, you'll have to go back, because over the year, it'll, we'll add this, change that for the zoning, it'll make changes. And so every year, you'll need to come back and adopt them. And so we're trying to say, it lines up with Christmas, as we go into New Year,
and we said to somebody, 2020 is the next project. So every year, every year, adopt this time, depending if we have the changes in it or not, you'll have to adopt a zoning map. To say, okay, we went through the year, and we had this ordinance, that ordinance, the city secretary will be able to list that we made these changes, it's been approved, and we'll attach the minutes from P and Z. So we're going to be 110% legit. So it's a housekeeping issue, unlike our annexation map. It's a housekeeping issue.
And if I may, Madam Mayor and Council, it's a best brother, the zoning map is a best brother under 3C on new business, under consideration and action regarding the ordinance. The ordinance does outline that planning and zoning did review it, that they approved it, that there was a public meeting regarding them, and also that it was publicized. So yes, everything is in keeping, and we do need it.
Yes. It's a housekeeping thing. So those things will change, but as every year, you have to annually vote on your zoning map. We wanted to put it in presentation for you to look at it. And later on, this ordinance will prove, say, this is it. And then next year, August of 2019, when we have our new annexation area, your map will look different because the new areas that we annexed in will now be part of that map.
Yes, may we, if you'll look at the ordinance under 3C, it does indicate that the last ordinance that dealt with this was actually dated December 14th, 1995. So it's been modified.
And you're supposed to do it annually.
Yeah, we haven't done it since 1995.
Any questions? Try to count them.
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
R2, that's a multi-family residential, which is a part of the rest.
I'm sorry?
Yes. Yes, he's saying yes.
Yes. And going back on First and Pine Street, on the letter E on Pine, that is, that's supposed to be on the other side in a bigger area instead of the left side on the E. On Pine Street, Pine and First. You can see a bright?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay. It's on the other side, not on the letter E, that area.
You're saying that that particular parcel is on the...
That's Mr. Rowmore. I think it is Ross Barreda. Well, I don't know if he's done that. But there's, there's, there's an issue there. It's starting off hand, and I haven't gone through it. But if council feels comfortable now, passing this...
This is what is on the records.
Right.
This is what is on the record.
Right.
And so because when it's happening historically, as the city attorney has said, things have been zoned, the use of it may not comply with the zoning is, but we have to say officially that it's been zoned, and it has been updated since 1995. And so some of the changes that may have been happened since 1995 let up here, but officially for your zoning, that's what it's zoned on.
Well, this, this, this Montana family residential is, is not old. It's not, it's not even, it's new. Correct, Director? Okay, so they're, just starting off there, there's an issue there.
Do you, if I may just, Council, I think, Mrs. Stewart, is it correct that there's some areas that are non-conforming that look a little bit different because they have not been zoned?
That is correct. And I'm happy if the councilman has a concern, happy to verify it. If I get back to the office, that's not a problem. And we can, we can adjust it if the record warrants adjusting it. But if the record says it's at that particular parcel, then that's what their consent.
Well, I can tell you that it's not there.
And yeah, I'm not trying to substitute my judgment for you. I'm just saying.
I understand that. But like I said, council wants to go ahead and approve this with, you know, that...
Mrs. Stewart, if I may just reflect, Madam Mayor and Council, if they approve it tonight, would they come back and then amend it if there is some sort of...
Yeah. This is one of their, one of their core authorities that they have the ability to do. So at any time, if something needs to be evaluated, then we can discuss what that process is, if it's a rezoning process, which requires the P and Z to do it in the hearing, or if it's a correction type process, it's absolutely been their authority to do it.
Yes, this is, this is a two-way question.
Yeah, I'm going to ask, like, if they're residential, then really it's a commercial? Are they paying taxes for a commercial or for, not for residence?
They're paying taxes, the adblocker taxes that they're paying to the city are based on the property valuation. So that's, it's not necessarily a question of whether it's residential or commercial as far as what the city sees.
Right.
If there are business property taxes that are due elsewhere to the state, then that's a separate matter. That doesn't involve your zoning.
And if I may, Madam Mayor and Council, I think the reason that it is coming before the council is because we need it.
Right.
We don't have it.
Right.
It's a starting point, can be modified, it can be changed. Definitely, Mr. Stewart can look what letter E is. I think there were some issues last time that there were businesses where it showed residence instead, but that basically has not been changed. And I think that that's why the map was, ended up in a hole last time. But definitely, if you can look at that from a H- based, Mr. Stewart, and...
Any other questions, the council? Any citizens' comments? Okay. If not, I will move on to item 3C, which is to consideration action to approve ordinance 2018-016, the official zoning map.
I made a motion to approve, but we're going to come back in what, in two months or a month, and redo it.
Okay, if you need to, if Mr. Stewart can look at the issues, yes.
We can.
I still have some kind of, I see a lot of mistakes also.
Revision.
Okay.
True, I see a lot of mistakes.
Well, right now, we're dealing with just approving the ordinance, and then you have a map, each councilman, councilperson has a map that you can go, you can take and really, really review it.
That would be...
Okay, so do I have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Yeah, I have a seconded by Mr. Ortiz. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Back up to item 2B. I'd like to ask our city attorney an update on the spectrum situation. It's been a while since we talked about that.
It has, Madam Mayor, once again, a compliment. That is something that Ms. Turner and I have been trying to get together. What started out being at an amount of approximately, I'm thinking 49, 60,000 when we started out, later on, we discovered that we were probably looking at damages over 200,000. Unfortunately, we've had a change on the public's director. I know that Mr. Veloskis, when he was here, was in charge of photographing and documenting, but since he's left, now the individual that has tried to pull that together is Ms. Turner. And I think that Ms. Turner has the documents to keep with us.
Yes. And so what we've done, thank you, Sylvia, thank you, Mayor, for reading that and the attention. What we're trying to do is I have collected all of the work orders. There were several different work orders. And because we had a lot of different things going on, some of them were actually spectrums, some of them were actually from Seca. And I believe Councilwoman Mayor, Mayor Potem came to our meetings and met with our contractors to do that. So we had a lot of different contractors doing that. So everybody would call in, and they said it was spectrum. Some of them were not spectrum. Some of them actually were some of our workers and other workers as well, including the gas company, and don't forget Frontier. And so I've been able to go through them. I'm down to 117 of the work orders, and the guys took pictures for me. But what they didn't do is take addresses for me. And so I have pictures of men in hoes, but I can't actually identify where they are. The attorney name is Mr. King?
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. King has been nice enough, but he wants photos alongside with the locations. And at one time, they had three contractors in there. I know they had one with a queue that was in Riverbend, and then they had two other, a B Com and a B Reynolds. And so they want to make sure who actually followed us, what the location and pictures are really important. I've even actually, you've got documents from the police department as well, because sometime when people would call after hours, they would call the police department, those complaints. So we're listing all those complaints. The guys are looking at the photos to identify where they think they may have been, or what street they're on, even they can just give you what street they're on. And then hopefully, after the Christmas break, we'll be able to present to you before we meet with the attorney. And so that was I key. So we've had several different conversations that actually had been earlier today to be, to get. So hopefully, it will be on the agenda, because I think one of the directions was to have it on every agenda. So the city's secretary, Mayor, can we use you to put up new, the city's secretary, Mayor, we'll have it on every agenda, even if it's updated, say, it's coming, spectrum just exists for update. Is that okay, Council?
I have a question. One of the things that we may want to look at is to see what kind of, I guess, warranty or whatever that they're going to give us on some of the work, because last time, I guess a couple of weeks ago, they caught individuals from the company that had gone through a sewer line and were covering it without fixing it.
I agree with, yes, I agree with those. We have, okay, so that is not a spectrum. That's actually USDA. We do get one-year warranty of the work, but the clock has not started ticking on that particular one. And that's the one I was speaking to the mayor for Tim, was not seeing them to come in and meet, and we discussed some of those things. But that's on a different project. It's not on spectrum.
Well, what I'm saying is that when it's a water line, he's going to show record, because obviously, he had water showing. We don't know how many lines, sewer lines that spectrums are, any of the Frontier or whoever it was went through that sewer line. And we're not going to know until a little bit later when we start smelling that stuff.
Well, one of the things that's going to help us is the attorney, Mr. King, hasn't sit around. I have to identify the location, and so that'll tell me who was working where. Because in some areas, Spectra wasn't working, in other areas, Seca was working, which is where our state contractor for USDA was. And other places, the gas line. I mean, the school has suffered as well. They emptied the same gas line by the Capes School three different times. Sometime, one time it was spectrum, another time it was actually a gas line hit their own line, and then another time it was Frontier. But when people were calling, some of the work orders were saying, Spectra, because everybody quite frankly was not happy with Spectrum, if I can say that into the company, that they became the bad guy. So I need to be able to sort that out. But we've gotten a handle on those and those reports, and hopefully, we can come back. Because the overtime as well, I think on the mission report, we did not list the overtime. And so the overtime is definitely mounting. And so we're happy, we need to be able to do some recovery for that as well.
And I think, if I may also, Ms. Turner, and that I think that Councilman Jimenez wanted us to be sure and add in if we used any sort of special equipment that was utilized and that was extra pay or stuff of that nature, that he wanted to be sure that we added that in. So I think that we need to identify that as well.
Yes.
Because we followed those guys every day for months.
For months.
And we used all our equipment, all our everything.
And we're going to be using FIBR's numbers that we had for the equipment, because FIBR has numbers that are standard users to how many hours and those things. And we're actually even doing, I'm not being nice, I'm actually doing a full cost of an employee, so with benefits and everything. So even though his hourly rate may be 10, that's not what necessarily he costs the city of Florenceville. So it would be with the full benefit. The nice part about it is the difference of about 17%. It's about 17% more of what that employee costs me with benefits. I'm putting in a whole little enter my, of that's what that employee costs on the time. And so it is quite intensive. But we should be able to get you sometime of, perhaps before we go to the attorney and meet.
Ms. Turner, how much longer will they be here? Or are they done?
You know, they have been telling us, it's a moving target. I know they told the mayor at one point to her face, it's on her March of 2018, and it's almost March of 2019. It's a moving target. We have asked and gotten different numbers. Some people have started receiving service from Spectrum, so they're open and ready. But even, I know Mr. Mr. was here on the digital, the original meeting that we had, they said they would be done in December of last year. They're going to be either those targets. And when we asked, they said we're almost done, more than a month, and they give, they don't leave. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, I would be glad to have it on each agenda.
And we can support it on your name, Mayor?
Yes.
Is that known, Secretary?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Okay.
Any other questions concerning that? If not, moving on to item 3A, consideration action to approve the city of Florenceville 2019 holidays. Our city manager?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, and I'm going to ask you to disremember what we did during all of those wonderful budget workshops. Okay. So as you have before you, that's the list of our holidays. You officially have to approve all the holidays that are coming up for 2019. As you see listed here, here are all of your holidays. The most discussion that we had on the changes back on our workshop were Thursday, October 10th, the peanut festival, as well as Friday, October 11th, which is the peanut festival. It is your choice to do. That's one of the cost savings that I had recommended, but you will have to approve. So that's one thing if I can point out. The second thing is that we have a brand-new holiday since we started, and President Trump declared Wednesday, December 5th, National Day of Mourning, and it is now a national holiday. There was no mail, some banks closed, and that will be going forward. And so if you care to, I am not recommending, but if you care to, you can look at December 5th as a National Day of Mourning. And just for notes, since we're on holidays, I'd like to know if you have any directions on how you'd like to celebrate the National Day of Prayer, which is on May 2nd. If you want to have a ceremony, not a holiday, but if you care to have some type of recognition for the National Day of Prayer, prayer that will happen on the first Thursday of the month of May. So I look forward to, any questions, Mayor, City Council?
I know we had discussed the amount that on the, on each day, which we know, we'll get back to you. For each day of peanut festival costing the city upwards of 15,000?
Yes, upward of 15,000. We have to imagine that there's a full day of payroll that you have to pay. And then on the police side, and the police and their negotiations understand that they get holiday pay. I need to explain to you the difference between overtime and holiday pay. Holiday pay is not paid a time and a half. Holiday pay is paid a...
Double time.
Double time. So your employee that goes and delivers those garbage cans on peanut festival day, or they go put up some more barricades and make $10, he makes $20 that day, an hour. And if you call him out, it's a minimum of two hours, automatic. So we need to be careful, as we're hearing. So it is not time and a half. It is double time because it is considered a holiday. So that's one of the recommendations I was making was just to remain, I know, I shouldn't say this on publicly, but we had a conversation with the judge, Wilson County, and they closed up as well on that Friday.
And half a day on Friday.
Half a day on Friday. And they're thinking about reconsidering because it's cost, we need to have that. But it's not just for the county employees that are here in the city of Florence, it's county-wide that they all get the holiday, because it's a county holiday. So the police department has been very, you know, flexible. See, they're not saying, yes, they understand if we had to limit it to holiday. But these are the holidays that you can at the National Day of Mourning, you can. But we need to be able to do that.
Yes, Mrs. Martinez.
Ms. Turner, as far as the two days for peanut festival, in their kind of controversy as far as the streets close in here, I mean, is that, isn't that why we've always been closed Thursday and Friday because of the vendors and all of that?
It's a special place in my heart, Ms. Martinez, for the peanut festival. It's closing my, my area and taking over my parking lot and things such as that, and facing us in this time. But we have control of the street. Actually, I hate to keep referring to you, Mayor. The mayor called me three to four weeks before peanut festival. They're carnivalized, like showing up down our street, blocking and parking the street. Weeks before, the police had to ask them to relocate them. So we're going to have to meet with the peanut festival a little bit. You know, I need to be open. I need to operate. Actually, Ms. Martinez, I can remind you that you can confirm mission of when they can close the streets and when they can't. And so we need to do it so that it does not cost us a lot of money because it does cost you. It's not a big cost savings. It's not the end of the world. I won't be able to fix my deficit, but it is going in the right direction.
Any other questions, Madam Council?
May I say something?
Yes.
It's concerning just what our manager said on those two, two days of, you know, our city employees have many, many hours of road work, correct?
You mean comp time, the big deal?
Comp time, vacation and all.
Yes.
I mean, you know, and, and the city's in a tight squeeze, you know, we're, we're in a tight budget now. And I don't want to go on details right now because our council does not have all the information before us. But it's just my, my, my understanding that the city's not doing too good in, in, in the budget so far. If council can take under consideration and cut them, some days, just for this year and come back the following year, hopefully, that our budget will look better, taking under consideration now that we've had conversations and workshops, you know, discussing those funds around 15,000 or so per day. It's just me, but I mean, you know, we have to look for the taxpayer and, and, and if we can make some cuts, we can, but not if...
Madam, I have something to say. We have discussed in eliminating October the 10th on that Thursday. So we can just do one day this year, and then next year, we, if our budget is better, we can add it back on.
I agree with you on that one. November 10th, if...
That would be up to the council.
That would be up to the council, because you have to approve these holidays every year.
I understand that, but I'm agreeing with my colleague on...
Yes. And as I said, if you look at the holidays, peanut festival has two holidays. The only thing that has two holidays is actually Christmas and Thanksgiving, and so, and New Year. So though it ranks really up there high with other holidays typically in storming, but any consideration is, is your manager, I would truly appreciate it.
To cut?
To eliminate definitely Thursday, October 10th, 2019.
I agree with you.
Any other questions?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, Ms. Martinez? What would be the repercussions of us not, aside from the funding aspect of it, of us not having the tent off, as far as planning and city road closure, something like that?
Well, it would just be, if we knew that we were not going to close for the tent, then when we meet, when peanut festival may come, the whole court, we have to definitely let them know that anything was open to do that. It would take a little time for the public to realize that we're going to be open on the day that you said it's being closed. There's a lot of, excuse me, a lot of last-minute things that we have, that they normally have to do, garbage cans, you know, deliver a lot. So my staff is working, and so it's really an overtime. It is a cost prohibitive type of thing. And again, going along that same line, those women and this is that. We don't, this doesn't want to add another. So we could look at having a, the National Day of Mourning, it's going in the wrong direction. But we do want to definitely notify and say that the National Day of Prayer is something that we want to have a ceremony, but it doesn't necessarily have to mean staff has to be off.
So does that mean that you want to go ahead and add December 5th also?
No, ma'am, I'm not asking that. I'm just telling you all your options.
Options.
It is not my recommendation.
Okay. And I do encourage, and we have tried to start more communication with peanut festival, peanut festival association earlier than when they come to present, so if the council so chooses to eliminate that day, or if it stays that day, I think communication with them should start immediately on that.